Can we call the meeting to order, please?
Mm-hmm. The Board of Education meeting set for December 11th, 2025 will be called at 6:01. Mr. Seals?
Here.
Ms. Alfred?
Here.
Dr. Shroom?
Yes.
Dr. Larr?
Here.
Mr. Roner?
Here.
Mr. Vererhaer?
Here.
And Ms. Cole?
Here.
Thank you. For the section for additional items to replace an agenda, I have one. I move that we add a closed session discussion item to the agenda to discuss a personnel matter. Would need a second.
A second.
Oh, Dr. Larr? Ms. Alfred? Josh? Dr. Larr?
Yes.
Mr. Roner?
Yes.
Mr. Vererhaer?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
And Dr. Shroom?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any other items to be placed on the agenda?
No other items.
Excellent. Let's move forward to section three, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
First of all, thank you for a great year. You guys did a great job. You did some great work. You continue to move forward. I think I said I don't really lose right now and nothing else is done. So I want to keep it up and look forward to continuing to be a supportive public community and coming to meetings and adding what I can and working what I can at the same time. So thanks again. Happy holidays, everyone. Hopefully get to this weekend with the weather. It'll be cool, but at least not much as much snow as there were. So thanks again.
Happy holidays to you, Mr. Shroom. Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right. Let's move to item number four, the consent agenda, please. We have a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Seals?
Yes.
Dr. Larr?
Hi.
Dr. Shroom?
Yes.
Mr. Vererhaer?
Yes.
Ms. Alfred?
Yes.
And Ms. Roner?
Yes.
Item number five, committee reports. Starting off with the Wixie. Oh, Jessica? No, sorry. Hey, committee folks.
That's Dr. Shroom for Wixie.
Did you go to Wixie?
Well, my community special education.
I think that's Wixie. What happened there?
Any quick comment you want to say?
Yeah. You got a report out?
We discussed the budget. It's something big budget. Everything looks good and... Why not? I'm gonna like...
No.
So what was the budget? Like, what was it for?
This is... So this agreement is where we have students participating in the land special education program. And the budget says for... What's the name of the person? There's more money going between the district, but the budget says for that one person for marriage.
Oh. Dr. Swanson. Ms. Swanson.
There's King Mole in the joint annual... Thank you, Dr. Shroom. The joint annual conference. Who would like to share?
Are you excited? That was awesome. I forgot to bring... There's something I want to share with you because I said it on a session about having student representation on the board. This was something we talked about in the policy committee. And yes, it is mostly high school students who do it. But I think there may be a couple of eighth grade students each year who might be interested in. So I'm definitely interested in discussing it more and seeing... So I'll send youth documentation back to the way. It was just... It was... They had two students who had actually been on their high school's school board. And it was just what they took away from it was really cool to care about, so.
That's really interesting. Any other reflections from those who went?
So I had a child... I still have the child, but that child used to be student body president in eighth grade. And there was a domestic movement to get students on the committee. And it didn't quite pan out, but one of the discussions that I was having before I could bring it to court was to have a meeting every two months or something where they could come ask questions or present initiatives that they were working on. But that child got distracted with other things and...
They love that for us.
I thought the conference was awesome. I'm so glad I got to go and I enjoyed being a delegate and being able to kind of see and learn from it, especially as we went through the constitutional amendments and seeing, you know, what other districts were thinking about some of the, you know, thoughts on the changes. There was a lot of heated discussion on, you know, if depending on if it's an emergency situation and they change or spend or modify parts of the constitution. That part actually had a lot of activity. And one that I think is interesting, too, was the discussion about them being able to meet more closely, too. And that one got a lot of back and forth. So it was a great experience. I highly encourage anyone, you know, taking the opportunity to do it. And yeah, overall, the effort was great. I got a lot out of it.
Fantastic. Anybody else?
I attended student advisory council. I won't go further since that was discussed, but one thing I found interesting, they asked, what would you have changed and what you would have done better in education? And common theme was that they would have liked better preparation for the job market, having controls inside for public health. I know with AI, the job market is going upside down. It's gonna be very different continues from there. It's mostly for high school, but the comment was mostly for high school. But maybe we can even start early, guiding them what things they should invest in, let's say.
We have great news for you. We're already doing that. We're working on that this year. I won't... I think Principal Ryan might present on that in a meeting soon. Maybe so.
Awesome. Excellent. Last call on the joint annual conference. All right. How about the parent-teacher council?
Well, we were both about that. We were like, well, how does this turn into that?
I'll confirm, yes.
Right. I mean, right now, you know, there's a lot of discussions over, you know, they've got the budget now and like, what are we doing, when, kind of planning things out. There's a lot of discussion about like, bringing more stuff to AVOCA and, you know, having a lot of that kind of engagement. There was a good turnout for the fall fest. So, you know, kind of again planning things out and what are we gonna do and what are the resources available to, you know, do a lot of these events and getting volunteers. And so, you know, it's a lot of that stuff, but I do encourage, like, when there's open meetings, it's on their website and they put it out there on their social media. Please sit ahead. They're great meetings. It's good to give feedback and learn more about it.
Excellent. Finance committee.
We had a good meeting this Monday. We discussed the student fees and they're on target, the collective entry fee. And we also discussed the fund balance policy, which we brought up to the board soon. But also, we discussed a little business related to perhaps having some of the more financial policies moved to the finance committee versus the policy committee. So I'm betting that'll be a whole discussion, but it's something we talked about. And then we talked about an item on the agenda tonight for architectural services. You'll find out all about that.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move to item number six, superintendent's report.
Yeah. Good evening to everybody. I have a pretty short report. I'm gonna say dance with a very special tribute to somebody here. So first of all, next slide, please. I just want to make sure that we're already seeing a different type of winter than we did last year. We've already, I think, gotten maybe either the same amount of snow or maybe a little bit more. So I just want to remind all of our families to please look at our implement weather guidelines in case we do need to call in a emergency weather day in the future. This... That is a link there. So the presentation will be... We have this on the website already. This presentation is shared in the agenda, so please refer to this link for more information on what our process is for that. Next slide. I'm happy to share the next week is going to be Disability Awareness Week at Murray Murphy School. This will be December 15th through the 16th, Monday and Tuesday. And I do really want to commend Principal Ryan for working on this and putting this together, as well as the staff that have also been working on this. This is a really, really great opportunity for our students and it actually is part of the learning standards in Illinois to incorporate disability awareness into our lessons. So this is one of the ways that it's going to be done. And what they're doing is they're working with an organization called Educating Outside the Lines. That is a disability awareness program for middle, not just middle school students. It does start in kindergarten through eighth grade. Right now, we are focusing on middle school. And some of the activities that will be happening next week are, for instance, adaptive sports and PE. And so this is where students will learn from an educator who teaches adaptive sports and coaches paraathletes. They'll be taught how to use a wheelchair for athletic purposes and engage in inclusive sports activities. For our sixth and eighth graders, they're going to engage in prosthetic design. And so they'll meet with a cosmetist, I believe the pronunciation is, from Lori Children's Hospital, to learn how prosthetics are designed and used. They'll spend time creating and refining their own prosthetic designs. And our seventh grade students will be working on inclusive playground design. So they will be exploring key elements of inclusive playgrounds such as accessibility, safety, sensory needs, and designing their own ADA compliant playground concepts. And so in addition to the disability awareness, I also just want to point out that this is one of the ways where career pathways comes up as well, because students get to see the different careers and the different things that they can do with this. And this might spark their interest in creativity. So super, super excited about this. And I do want to say that this will be all... There will be an opening ceremony to kick off these events and the board members, you are cordially invited to the ceremony on Monday morning. It's going to be from 8:05 to 8:55. So if you'd like to be a part of this, please join us on that day. I'll include this information in mind. We can update you as well so that you have it there, too.
Could you just say a little bit more? I think that's really interesting.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little more about how this came about?
Oh, Principal Ryan, it's your turn. I'm just gonna... Educating outside the lines is something I actually engaged in when I was in District 39 at Ramona Elementary School. At that time, for the primary students, they were studying how to... For example, one grade level studied how to read Braille. When we had... When we were blind, we taught the children how to read Braille. We had the wheelchairs in PE. The immersive experience for the kids was so impactful to the children that then Sandra and I were just talking about the criteria of state and the standards. And Kristin and I, since I've been here, talked about disability awareness. So it felt like the right time to reach out to them. And they said they had a velability to come and work with our kids. So it all just... The stars aligned. And we had the time and the schedule next week. And the staff was... The courses will be taught through our science classes. So it all just came together really nicely. So it really was through the collaboration with Kristin and the support of Sandra that we could bring it to the school.
So next slide. Thank you very much. So just wanted to remind everybody, the Village of Womack has created and put out this Know Your Rights wire. I shared this previously on my report, but I wanted to share it again, just so everybody has information about just what the village is doing and what support systems there are. Next slide. And I just want to remind everybody of some dates coming up. Winter break is right around the corner. It's going to be from December 22nd through January 2nd. On January 5th, we have an institute day for teachers and staff. There's no school for students. Our staff members will be here. So school for students will resume on Tuesday, January 6th. So just a reminder, let the kids sleep in on January 5th. Don't wake them up. And then on January 9th, that week right away, we get into our finance committee meeting. We have a board meeting on January 15th. Then a little bit of another little break on January 19th to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. And then our committee of the whole on January 23rd. But as always, I do like to save the best for last. So I'd like to make sure to honor our very own Tim Furman. Alina, you read my mind. I wanted him to sit there. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to everybody who cooperated in getting Mr. Furman here today. Because he was a no when we asked him to RSVP for the board meeting. But it's because we obviously don't want him... Want to overextend him. And we are just so, so grateful for Tim and everything. We're used to seeing him at the board meetings. And, you know, lately, we had Demir take over and give Tim a well-deserved break after many, many years. But thank you so much, Tim, for being here today, because you deserve to hear all the wonderful things that we all see in you. And so just for thanking Tim today for his years of service, he's about a week away from retirement. Is that true?
It's true.
All right.
I've learned one thing about that people... When you announce that, people say, what are you gonna do?
Oh.
So to for clarity, saying, I think...
That is the best answer. But for right now, you're just gonna hear some things about yourself, okay? On behalf of the board and the administration, I am honored to recognize Tim Furman as he retires from our school community. He truly embodies our school's mission every day, bringing more generosity and kindness to everyone around him. With a smile always ready and a welcoming heart, Tim has been a living example of the district spirit, a presence that made everyone feel seen, valued, and at home. I can attest to this, his welcoming nature, because when I attended my first board meeting almost three years ago, it was in January, Tim was the first to welcome me, and I'll never forget that smile. The love by students, families, and colleagues alike, Tim will be deeply missed. Well, we will feel the absence of his daily presence, and we really will, because you can feel Tim in the air. I know we are all filled with joy for the new adventures that await him. Thank you, Tim, for the countless ways you have made our AVOCA community brighter. I am so grateful to you, and I know everybody here and everybody in our school community is as well. Can we give him a round of applause? Thank you.
I appreciate that so much. Thank you. You know, it supports me because I came here. Get me out of the house in December without a SWAT team. It's remarkable. And I don't have a speech, but I do want to say that I've been treated like such a king. So really, a king. So we need to know this thing, which is, I've worked for a lot of school boards, and I live in a town with school boards. I know their needs. And you've been in some of these boards. What you've got here is special. It's just... It's about the respect we all have for each other. I think that's filtered down to the way people treat me over the years. So I'm very nervous right now, but I think that's important. I just have felt so welcomed every day. So thank you. Thank you. That's all I have to say. I don't know what I'm gonna do, but I did also want to acknowledge that your kind words are not the only important thing. I also want to thank you for the secret six-figure bonus I snuck in.
They haven't approved AI.
Here's my applause to you. Thank you.
Well, I do have a thing to say. We have cupcakes and an opportunity for everybody to, you know, a little break maybe to say thank you.
For that excellent report, our thanks to Mr. Furman. We will, he's already on the floor. All right, we're on to item number seven, reports. Do you want to go through the point?
Yes, um, so we had some lawyer requests, um, and they were extensive, so we did request an extension on these, just so that we would be able to meet with some of them. We provided the information but redacted and in other situations we were, we had to withhold the information. Um, for instance, in the case of the trainings for, um, some of the training material that they requested, those are copyrighted materials, so we can't share those.
Quite extensive.
We, um, yeah, so those were completed on time even with the extension.
All right, any questions on the point?
Is this a new request, this option question?
Yes, yes. Yes, and it's going, and from what I know, it's going to various school districts. We were not the only ones and the request is similar. So it wasn't a specific target of Evoque, it also went out to other school districts. And I anticipate that there will be more.
Do you, I have one more question. Do you really mean to the training materials and the risk management library being separate with us personally or?
No, no, they were sent on different days.
Okay.
Certainly an interesting request. Um, all right.
Especially the, there's one of them that mentions about, um, our turn to Robin Schwartz, which I just found interesting, so.
Interesting business. Um, seven point two, annual statement of affairs.
Um, so the annual statements of affairs is just a report that all Illinois school districts are required to, um, create and used to be had go to ISB, they changed some of the requirements around it, luckily because it made it a little bit simpler for me. So, um, the scope of this is just, there's a cover page, I mean, the report is attached that just asks for the district size, number of attendance, um, centers, employees, tax rate by funds. There's a salary schedule tab in there that requires gross pay for the non-certified staff and it's, um, recorded as a salary range in this report. Um, then they ask for the vendor payments, um, payments between one thousand and twenty-five hundred and anything over twenty-five hundred. And then the last, uh, tab and requirement is contracts over twenty-five thousand. Um, and this is, if, if you have a multi-year contract, you only list it on this report the first year that you have it. So, uh, it doesn't, you, we don't even list it out, it's just the total. And then it has it broken out by, um, minority owned or female.
So, annual?
Pardon me?
Senario?
Yeah. So, um, requirements we posted, like I said, we just have to submit to ISB, I've been on it, don't have to do that. Um, we do still have to put it in the newspaper, which, definitely will do that. And then we just post it on the website and make sure we let everybody know it's available to you in the office if you want to see if you have a copy.
So is this largely just about the transparency?
Yes, yeah, just transparency. I will say like the information that's asked for on this, um, report, because I was really thinking hard about it, I'm like, I don't think it's, you can't find this information on any other report. Now, there were some other tabs in here, like there was a salary schedule tab that was for certified staff. I believe they removed that because we are required to post, um, all the certified staff salaries in that other, in another report, which we presented, the EIS reports that we presented to the board a couple of months ago. Um, and what else was, I think that was, they removed that and some of the, I believe it was like assets that was on the cover page and all that can be found in the AFR. So they removed the tabs that you can find on other reports that we already create annually. And then, like I said, I couldn't think of any other report that reflects it in this manner, so. Yeah, it's just about the transparency.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Uh, let's move to item number eight, public hearing of the twenty-twenty-five tax bill.
So the public hearing, just, uh, before it's called to order, just want to remind everybody that, um, the school district is asking within the confines of Evoque laws as we can ask for, so a public hearing is actually not required for us to do. We do it and it has been done previously at Evoque, uh, for an added layer of transparency. But the current, uh, tax levy as it, that's being requested is not something that requires a public hearing. But again, I do think it's a good practice to make it part of a public hearing, just to answer any questions, uh, that the board members have or the community may have. Um, and so, for president, you can call the hearing to order.
I will, I appreciate that context you just gave. I think that, that's a great, um, message to underscore. All right, uh, I would like to call the hearing to order.
So I'm just gonna kind of go a little bit, lead through this presentation that I did the last time, just try to highlight some other points. If anybody wants me to slow down, just let me know if there's a good question about the certain slide I am on, uh, feel free to interrupt me. Um, so again, this is the local property taxes in Illinois, I need to help you understand that. Um, so the local property taxes are always based on the, uh, equalized assessed value. Your property taxes, taxes are levied by all local governing bodies, which includes the counties, the municipalities, townships, libraries. Um, one important note to remember is that the assessed values are not determined by the local taxing bodies, but that is all determined by the Cook County Assessor's Office. Part of the property tax cycle is the first step for that is the county determine the market value, um, then the assessed value is calculated, and then the state equalization factor is applied to that to come up with the final EAB. So your EAB is, um, used to, uh, calculate your tax bill. So if the EAB is then the final one is finally used to, um, you take the tax rate times your EAB and that will give you your final tax bill. So the tax levy is, we are governed, all taxing bodies are governed by the truth and taxation law that establishes the process, um, for us to follow when we're adopting the levies. Uh, the levy is the ask from the taxing, uh, district, um, bodies, uh, to the county to, for the property taxes that we would like to collect. The tax extension is the total amount of property taxes that the county will, um, give to the taxing bodies. And then the bills are issued and, uh, the taxes are collected and distributed to the taxing bodies. Uh, there's another law that also, uh, limits the amount of taxes that any taxing body can ask for, and that's the property tax extension limitation law. Um, this only allows us to increase the property tax extensions, um, by the lesser of five percent or CPI. And the two key things to always remember is that when we're talking to tax levy, that is the ask from the taxing bodies, that's not what we're gonna get, the extension is what Cook County is going to give to us. Now, this next slide is, and I'm not gonna read it in detail unless somebody would like me to, it's just again, uh, how it goes from the market value to the EAB, where it takes into account any exemptions you may have, the state equalization factor, um, is put into this calculation to get down to the final EAB. This next slide is the relationship between EAB, tax rate, and tax extension. There's two different ways you can calculate it. The EAB times the tax rate divided by the one, uh, by one hundred is the tax extension, which is what your tax bill would be. Um, the other is the tax extension divided by EAB multiplied by one hundred, one hundred would equal your tax rate. Um, and low that, there's just, there's a few examples of how you can utilize that formula to calculate it. Yeah.
Just to comment that the tax extension and the EAB determine the tax rate. The county tax, uh, calculate the tax extension based on the limits that you can get, they calculate the EAB for the entire county.
Mm-hmm.
And that's used by the county to calculate the taxing.
Mm-hmm, yep.
We don't know that yet.
The EAB.
We know the EAB, I don't.
No, um, unfortunately, Cook County is, they have, I mean, you all know this because you all know that your tax rate, so we do have the final, um, tax extension, which did not change from, uh, the draft that I presented in one of these slides. Um, so everything has been finalized, but, yeah, we don't know what the EAB.
That's fine.
Yeah, so, yeah, Cook County is unique in that, like, you go into this, you don't know the new growth, you don't know the EAB, you know, there's a lot of unknowns and I think I said this last time, you know, I came from Lake County where I had all of that information already. Like, so when I did the, yeah, the tax levy, I already had the information in front of me where Cook County still is a little behind, so. Yeah, it, there's a lot of unknowns when it goes in, it's kind of like budgeting, it's all this estimation and guessing and making assumptions about different things, so.
The, 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 but it doesn't become a much touch to the.
So how much would the district receive if the four point one seven percent is extended? That would increase our property tax revenue by four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, the additional one point two seven percent that I added, um, for new growth would add an additional two hundred and eight thousand dollars. Uh, the next slide, again, um, is the first column is the tax extension and this, these are the final numbers, like I said, did not change from the draft, so these are all correct now. Um, and next to it, just to have a comparison of, there's the estimated tax levy, um, next to that. And then just to summarize, um, the, all funds except for debt service that we're asking for is seventeen million, seventy-four thousand dollars and including the debt, uh, service payment, it would be seventeen million, eight twenty-five, eight seventy-one.
Are there any questions?
No question, just thank you, Tracy. It's, you know, it's a lot to put together, but, and explain, and I love that they use words like levy instead of request or whatever, but anyway, I think, you get used to it.
Yeah.
Yes, and I, uh, didn't get a chance to tell you when I told Daniel today, I said I never imagined I would say I actually loved that presentation.
Oh, oh, well, thank you, yeah.
Actually, I explained it and I understand it, so, thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Pritha, this is about last, uh, this year, not next year, uh, with, we are paying at a different ton, uh, property taxpayers this year. How has that impacted the payments from the state through the district?
You mean, like our, our state fund?
Yeah.
No, the state fundings will be coming in, yep.
No, why do that, is it in the same time, in the same order?
Yeah, we received, um, two state payments every month.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not affected that. And luckily, we were in a good shape that, yeah, we're able to make it through this.
But that's, that's why we have to be in good shape.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions from board members? Now, I'm gonna see if there are any questions from the public. Okay, are there any questions from the public?
Did the county give any indication when they let you know when those final figures are in? So I know everything's way off and then I know I was at the tax office today and they said that even next year, instead of typically going out in February, our bill will go up, they will be assessed and have to pay by March first, now it's gonna be going out in late February, early March, and actually get to the next bill, we do like it first.
Can I just, I'm not sure how well the lights pick up, but I think the question was, does the county tell you when?
Right, will county let you know when those final figures are?
To be honest, typically I hear it from, um, surrounding districts.
Okay.
Like New Trier, uh, their CSBO is very much on top of that. I do not get notifications from the county about this. I, I didn't even get any notifications about this six months away. It was all kind of, you know, you heard about it and.
We had that same situation happen with our superintendent's group where we had questions and we weren't getting information from the county and we nominated a superintendent to go and ask for it.
He did, and he was a sport about it, um, but did not get many answers.
And then with the reassessment, the second half bill won't be like it is typically with fifty-five percent the first half, forty-five in the second half, now with the reassessment, you get the fifty-five in this first half and the second half could be another fifty-five or more because of reassessment figures will start to kick in, the second bill, we get, you know, in August.
What we hoping on?
Well, if the computer system that they supposedly got fixed all that is back on, then we should get back into a regular cycle, but.
Yeah.
Again, it is, um, of course.
Mr. Orth, we heard the same thing about the computer system.
Well, I know very well, computer system. Really, with that, if I was actually going to the office, find out the exact numbers of what was going on from the office's file, then I still also rather roll, find out exactly what is going on. So hopefully now, I can actually pay my tax bill, um, yesterday, today, so I can.
Are there any other questions from, no, you're very good? Okay. Or any?
So, uh, to put things in context and what implication of this debt and subsequent extension, this year, a house that was valued at half a million last year paid four thousand pounds in property tax to Evoque. Assuming CPI comes around three percent and we ask for the maximum extension, that would raise the property tax that we pay for Evoque by a hundred and thirty pounds. Uh, when we look at our finances, it's a pretty good, um, and surplus of, again, thanks to our board of administration here, we have a surplus of one point eighteen pounds this year, uh, we had surpluses of around a million dollars in previous years. Our, as, our reserves, uh, have been about fifteen million dollars. Again, just a couple of those minutes, they're, they're well academically. Uh, I think we pay very competitive rates for our staff. And we offer, um, many extracurricular programs, uh, with envy of many other plans in our country. Uh, now I'm still gonna go to raise the, to ask for the maximum possible, uh, because we still have these many, um, for says, H-VAC to be a plus one. So I, I wanted to explain why despite all this fact, I think it's still the only thing to do to ask for the maximum extension.
This is a dumb question, but do we have some sort of fund? I know we've got our, you know, operations, operating fund and all that, but something that's specific to some of the things that we're looking at, like this, um, you know, that, that's fund just for that?
That would be the ONM fund or if it's a larger project, I think we would transfer funds into the, um, Fund Sixty, which is for capital projects.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, did we have one for capital projects? It, to me, it also just shows that transparency of like, this is what we're doing.
Yeah, and there's some, um, discretion in that, like the board can decide, hey, this project's not, or over five million dollars, let's, let's pay it out of the capital projects fund and some may get it out of their own M funds. I mean, you're still being transparent about all of it, but.
Yeah.
You know, when it, when you're talking like thirty million dollars or something, yes, you would definitely put in capital projects fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, um, then the hearing is officially closed. And we can move on to item number nine, which is discussion with action. And here, this is the final tax levy resolution, uh, so we're gonna need a motion.
I am wish to approve of resolution authorizing FIA final aggregate tax levy for the year twenty-twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Dr. Schrom?
Yes.
Ms. Luver, are you there?
Yes.
Mr. Seals?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Hi.
Dr. Darr?
Hi.
Yes.
Um, I also just wanted to echo what, um, you have been saying before I vote yes, that, um, I do think we need to start looking at facilities. Uh, we've already had the referendum, which didn't pass and we still have some, a lot of the issues, so we will, um, worry about that. So we will be able to, um, you know, be able to address these on the board.
Can I get a little?
Yes.
Uh, so, sounds like all votes are in, thank you very much. Um, now we get to move to item number 10, discussion without action. The vocal community, please go forward.
Hi. So we get to follow the tax levy with preschool, which is, um, a lot more fun. So I, you may or may not know, but this is Cara Frank and she is our amazing early childhood teacher. She's also special ed certified and a multilingual teacher. So she is our magical early childhood unicorn. Um, and you'll get to hear from her in a second, but I get to be able to introduce that program at a higher level. And so we are really excited tonight. Um, you know, I think it's been fun watching more of our teachers come in and be able to talk about some of the programming we have. And I think one of the things is if you don't have a child in preschool, it flies under the radar a little bit. And that really is something that we are very proud of. And so we're excited to give you an update about, uh, the planning and the instruction and the learning that happens in our preschool program. So, oh, that's me. Yeah, okay. So tonight, what we just really wanna make sure is that, um, you have a nice understanding of the focus of our preschool programming. And then also you, uh, I believe Dr. Adigene gave you an update earlier in the year that we are piloting an extended day option. And so we have surveyed our parents and wanna provide you with some information about that. Um, is anything? Okay, so you probably already know this and if you remember when we spoke with, when Doug Bolton came and spoke to us, one of the biggest things is the community and the community that our children experience in our classroom. And we have to remember that early childhood is really a child's first community when they come into school. It's the first one outside of their home. And so it's so important, uh, that we get it right for them. Um, and so we also know that, uh, early childhood is really critical for our students. They start to develop skills at a very early age, um, many important, uh, skills that help foster their growth and development further on. But also it's really important that we're incredibly intentional about this planning because it is such an important age, uh, for children's growth. And so Cara's gonna walk us through how we really are intentional about our planning and relate everything that we do, um, through the portrait of a graduate, right? Because those are our youngest members of our district and then they come on to hopefully stay with us all the way through eighth grade and graduate. And so this is where we get to lay that foundation, um, for our students. All right? Okay. Forgive me, I'm used to presenting to small children, so if I start singing or something, I apologize. Off key, of course. We will love it. Um, when Kristen asked me to be a part of this today, I thought it was important to, um, recognize that preschool is also aligned with portrait of a graduate. It, you might not think it, but we are not a daycare, we're not babysitting service, we're learning every day. Um, the first area is that they are academically prepared. Um, we teach early print concepts, for example. Um, in the last few years, we introduced a new writing program where the kids are learning all the pre-writing strokes and they have the names like liney line and Stanley stick and Sammy circle. And they go home and they find them and they're using those. And it's allowing them to move those into drawing recognizable pictures and telling us about that and also into writing letters and words and sentences. What are the next one? Um, confident advocates, um, building independence is a huge part of why we want these kids in school. Um, we want them to be able to do things for themselves. I know they're little and they're babies, but it's amazing that by the end of what, the first week of coats, we had all of our kids putting their own coats on. Parents were like, how did you do that? Like we teach them to lay it upside down, they put their arms in and they flip it over their head, it's about the preschool flip. Um, and they do that. We make bubble gloves when we wash our hands and they have to see bubbles all over to know that their hands are clean. Um, and our parents are seeing these things transferred at home as well. And they also sometimes remind their parents to do those things too, which is even better here. Uh, we want our students to be socially grounded. We model using words to express our needs every day. We actually give the kids phrases they can use, you know, we don't say eh, we actually say, I need help or don't take that from me. Um, and encourage the students to do that as well within our environment. Um, we're culturally competent, we value diversity, we're a blended classroom. We have students, um, general education students and special education students mixed together in our classroom every day. Um, we also have an ongoing all about me theme that kind of goes through our entire school year where we have family photos, um, in our classroom. We read a variety of books that reflect all of our students. They build self-portraits at the beginning of the year, they actually like build it to look like themselves and we use special paints and things to find and match their skin tones, so they actually look like them. They try to match their eye color. Um, we even have a student this year who has two different colored eyes and he was really excited to make sure that he put that when he made his, his own self-portrait. So, and being excited about that are the kinds of things that we celebrate in preschool. Um, the students are balanced, we have a very consistent schedule. Um, and our, that's another thing that our parents have taken notice to. A lot of times our kids do so well in this structure at school that the parents are like, why is it so different at home? And we tell them it's because it's predictable, they know what to expect. The day looks the same and even though things might shift, we warn them about those changes, but we still do it in a way that, that, um, they're used to and they see that and they expect it and then they feel safe. Um, they also have access to play and exploration across all subject areas within the school day every day. Um, civically engaged, from the beginning of the school year, we set an example from day one that this is our classroom. It's not my classroom, it's not your classroom, these aren't mine, they're ours. And we learn together to take care of that classroom. We all have to help take care of each other. Um, and we all have to help clean up the classroom. The best is like we now have student helpers that at the end of table time, for example, they'll come over and they'll say, what can I do to help? And they'll help us, or they'll just start putting away materials from the tables. Um, I have a student today noticed that we were putting the alphabet puzzles back in order and she came over and she's like, can I help you with that? Like, and that's what we wanna see and they're, they're educating for themselves and they're taking ownership of our classroom. Um, and finally, effective communicators, this is something that we do every single day. We give multiple opportunities for kids to share personal stories. Um, but we also set that boundary of like, that's not what we're doing right now, we have to focus on our learning, but we're gonna make time for these conversations later. Um, we build a lot of that into our snack time and our table time activities. We use that as a time that we can not only ask questions, but tell stories, um, and during our playtime as well. If you wanna come over and spend some of your time letting us know something that happened to you, we're, we're open to that. Um, and we encourage them to tell us about that and also to discuss their conflicts and ask for help, um, and make connections with each other and the activities that we're doing. It's cool. So, it's a little bit of hoping. Um, and so we also, Cara was a big part in helping to plan our extended day pilot program. And so really it came when we were looking at our enrollment and, uh, you know, Cara had spoken with me about, you know, she had had a lot of feedback from different parents and family members and community members in different ways about, we know the value of preschool, but we really need something a little bit longer to be able to work with our schedule or caregiver's schedule and how we pick them up and, and drop them off. And so we were really fortunate to be able to have the ability to, to be creative this year and to pilot that. Um, and so, you know, during this extended time, this extended day, kids have lunch with each, with each other, so they get to engage in more of that communication. There's a lot of, um, art projects, some deeper exploration in what they're interested in. Um, and just they, they kind of get to lead their own learning a little bit, right? They've made some suggestions. One day was for more rest time. I don't, I'll say, I wanna take a nap. They said, okay. We gotta like, hello, no, I'm out. Nobody went to sleep, but we had fun setting it up. Um, and so we, we surveyed our parents for feedback and 100% of our, our parents that are sending their students to the extended day are satisfied or very satisfied with the programming so far. Um, if you look, you'll see that this is, we asked them like, why were you looking for an extended day option? How does that help you? And so you can see that many people chose it because of the convenience, the quality of the teachers, um, the cost, uh, and the affordability of the offer, uh, the curriculum and the reputation. And I have to say, you know, with the reputation piece, we hadn't tried it before. So really, our parents, uh, took a gamble and, and, um, allowed us to try this. And so the feedback has been very positive. Um, we, so thinking about kind of the recommendations that I, that, that we might make. So there's a few things that go into that and so when we come back in January, I think it's January, I will have some recommendations about if we would like to continue the extended day and not have it be a pilot program. There's so many things that go into that. Because we're small, we really wanna make sure that we're able to, any kids that need to enroll, that we don't cut off that enrollment as best we can. We'd like to have a spot for every student and every family that wants their child to come. Um, that's part of it. The other part is, is that we need to make it, uh, it's always my responsibility to look at some of our students maybe coming out of early intervention. And early intervention is potentially a precursor for special education. And so we are required to hold some spots because it's blended and we need to make sure that those students have a spot in education if, if their plans require that. Um, so we have those pieces. Um, but I, we will take a look at that, we're gonna dive deeper into it, have some conversations with families and then I will come back to you with a recommendation, um, and also a fee tuition recommendation. The very last thing I'll say about that is Cara and I are both going to the Glendale Public Library this Saturday. They have an early childhood fair, so we'll be there representing the preschool. We'll have a little, I mean, it's only one of our four towns, right? But we'll have a little bit of information and some idea about if there might be some more families that want to enroll. So that will help inform it a little bit as well.
Okay. Um, I was just gonna ask, do we ever take out a district?
We do.
We do.
We, we, um, we take out a district students for sure. Um, and also we have a district that does not have their own blended program and have, um, some students that require that placement. And so they, the students are placed with us as well and then they pay us tuition, their district does. Um, so, uh, we're pretty excited about this offering. We think it's a little gem that not everybody gets to know about, so we were excited to be able to share it with you today. Um, and we are happy to answer any questions you might have about the programming.
That's the first question.
How long is the day?
The core day goes from 8:45 to 11:05, um, so that's when all of our students stay. And then the kids that stay for the extension can stay from 11:05 till 1 o'clock.
And that's been going on since the beginning of the school year?
Yeah, we started at the school year. And this year, we also, we eat lunch with the kids, we do it all together in the classroom. So it's a great time for conversation building, like that's a big part of it too. They're not with other people, they're with us all day.
I love this idea too. Um, it would've been great, like my child came out of early intervention, I'm like, you know, this, this would've been fantastic. I think it's building a lot of good skills that are gonna help these children in the long run.
So I have a question on those same lines. From the parent's perspective of, yes, this sounds fantastic, this is all I would've wanted. Um, as an educator, is it harder with these young people who maybe aren't used to being focused on any task for that long of a time? With an extended day, how do you adjust that? What, what do you do?
It's interesting, when we came up with this idea, that's why that morning portion is our core day. All of our real academic learning happens during that school, that first, up until 11:05. Um, typically, young kids, that's their best window to access learning too. Um, and we found that we also didn't want kids who didn't come to the extension to be missing out on academic experiences. Because we used to just have an AM, an at morning and an afternoon class and they both got the same. And if we were keeping some of these kids, we didn't wanna just be giving them all of this extra academic enrichment. But we've given them this opportunity for socialization that's just naturally built in. And there's all, there's, it's only about half the kids that stay. And they just have this opportunity to explore our classroom and we get to pull out all these materials that we wanna take out all the time and we don't have time to. And we can also do things that are more hands-on, like making slime or cooking something together in a way that we're teaching them, but it's not the same academic learning. So that's, uh, we know when they need a break, we offer spaces for that. Um, and we also kind of, we always have a plan for that extension, but we always kind of base it, we're always kind of flying by the seat of our pants in the sense of how are they today and what are their needs? Do we need to take an extra walk? Do we need to find an opportunity to have more movement around the building? Or is today a day that they kind of need their own space? So we build that in based on how they are that day. And I also think to your question, you know, when parents or caregivers ask us, you know, my child is only three, they're still taking a nap, we will say, the, for this year, we are still enrolling for extended days. So don't feel like when you first enroll your child. We've had a family say like, let's see how our child settles in and then we'll decide if extended day is an option. Because for sure, there are still some of the young ones, even some of our older ones, our afternoon nappers and they need that nap. And so it's not an opportunity that, that will be cut off for you, it just might not be the best fit for your child right now, but we've got it. And to Cara's point, like we're, they're very thoughtful about making sure that just because your child can't attend that afternoon session, they're not missing out on the, on the, you know, the learning that they, that they gain from that preschool. And also some of the older kids that chose to enroll in the program, it's really, a really good like stepping stone for them to go to kindergarten. It's just that bit longer, but it's not the full day. Like, I feel like it's a good in-between, if that makes sense.
Other comments or questions?
I have just sort of an observation. First of all, I always love these presentations, so thanks a lot for, I've learned more about this than I've ever, you know, heard before about it. It's interesting to hear about the portrait of a graduate come up in terms of this, like, which comes out of strategic plan, which will be coming around again. I don't ever remember hearing a word about preschool as, as part of this. And, you know, there certainly should be a presentation like this as part of that and maybe more. It's because, you know, it's chapter one for these kids and so it is part of the continuing one. And so, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Who else?
I just wanna say thank you to both of you because from the moment you were thinking through this, you came with already like very thorough executive plan. Not only did you do research, you were reaching out to families and you were making sure that you were incorporating those voices into what you did. And the implementation has been flawless. Thank you both.
How to follow that?
I know.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one.
I always tell my neighbors, I say one, I feel like I have to get it. I have one.
All right, moving ahead to item 10.2, the school calendar.
Yes, and it is hard to follow that, but I'm very lucky that tonight, the amazing Ms. Andrea Bialk is here to help me with this. So I'm gonna invite you to come up to the front. Yeah.
Abby, so? Um, thank you so much for being here this evening. Um, more than anything, I want to make sure that the work, um, that this committee did is acknowledged and, you know, Andrea was a part of that, as well as Ms. Emily Michael, uh, from Avoca West. And so this year, what we did, which is a typical practice in other districts that I've worked in and other neighboring districts, is to form a calendar committee to work each year on the calendar together. And, um, because sometimes if you're the only person working on the calendar, then you, um, just, you get tunnel vision and you just repeat and repeat and repeat and it's really easy to repeat that and many times there isn't any other way to do it. Uh, but it's good to see other perspectives and to get other ideas. I know Andrea, you had wonderful ideas that we were vetting and we were even thinking through, so thank you. Um, ultimately, we ended with this draft for you that we're presenting tonight. Um, the Board of Education, those of you who are seasoned on the board know this as an annual thing because it is the board's, um, purview to approve the start and the end of the calendar. Everything in between we fill in for you, but you let us know that the start date and the end date are good. Um, when coming up with a calendar and, you know, Andrea, if you wanna share anything, please jump in. It is a puzzle and it is a puzzle that doesn't have, that does not have any wiggle room. And so what you have to look at, you have to look at, uh, school code. There are guidelines that we have to follow, legal guidelines we must follow. You look at, um, your alignment with local, uh, school districts. Like for instance, we always wanna make sure we're aligning with Nutria High School. Why? Because we have some families that have students in both of our districts. So we don't wanna cause any major inconveniences by placing our breaks so wildly apart or different that the family can't maybe take a, a trip, um, or travel. And then also you have to make sure to align with whatever collective bargaining agreements are in your district and anything that might be in policy. And so we talked through all of that and we. And so we talked through all of that and we did that together. New for this year was a change in our collective bargaining agreement, which had four early release days. Andrea, is there anything you want to share about our process?
Yeah, I mean, I have to say that, first of all, Sandra, um, including us, was so fantastic. Emily and I learned so much from the process. I thought it was just a one and done, you just throw the calendar together, but it is quite a puzzle. Um, we thought we were meeting for two hours and we ended up meeting for three weeks. So, there are quite a few things that we did have to figure out. But, um, after everything was said and done, um, we did take a look at Nutria and I thought it was really well aligned. And I think the parents and the students and the faculty are going to be really pleased with, um, what Sandra's going to present, so.
Yeah, they definitely had a moment of panic, right? Emily said, it's all wrong, we have to start over.
I'm like, how are we not counting the right things? It's not making sense, so.
So I am super grateful to them. Yeah, wait, we don't have to get into the details, so. Um, so this calendar, um, you know, we have, um, we've had AEA representatives on there, but also they, um, shared with AEA members. I shared with our administrators, so they have also seen this. We will be bringing this to an open session, um, for parent teacher council, um, in January, um, to share this as well. And so, um, the notes on this calendar that I want to highlight are that there are one hundred seventy-eight student attendance days. That is something that the board had, um, wanted us to really stick to and it's also in the collective bargaining agreement. We have a hundred and eighty-two staff attendance days. Four of those days, like I said earlier, are early release days now. An early release day counts as a full attendance day because it has to have the minimum of five hours of, um, student seat time, what we call sometimes.
Can you repeat that sentence? Five hours of seat time?
That's an old term, old terminology that we used to use, meaning that's, uh, you don't count lunch, you don't count other, but student learning time, five hours. And so that, um, makes it count as a full student attendance day. Then we have also the requirement of force, um, maximum four staff instituted days, which we do have, we haven't, we did not go over. And then five proposed emergency days, as we talked earlier about inclement weather. Um, it's for that or any other reason that, where there could be an emergency day. We also, another thing that we went over is we really analyzed what legal school holidays are required and we, we found some interesting things. There's a school holiday that we haven't been putting in our calendar, which is Abraham Lincoln's birthday. So President's Day is not the legal school holiday, Abraham Lincoln's birthday is. But the, all of our township does President's Day.
So there's one more day.
Um, and so you have there the list of the legal school holidays that we need to be observing. The ones involved though are, there, there could be student activity on those days, meaning we can't have school on those days. That does require a public hearing. And so in January, when we bring this back, we're going to have to have a public hearing on holding, um, school on, on some of those days. Right now, we have, we would be holding school on Abraham Lincoln's birthday, Casimir Pulaski Day, Columbus Day and Veterans Day. Now, you can hold school on those days, but you do have to have activities connected to that holiday. It could be anything from an assembly, so Veterans Day, we had an assembly. Or it could also be targeted instruction in classes or a class with, about that, or a student, uh, project that is connected to that holiday. And so we made the decision to continue with that, uh, to follow the previous calendars, which have had school on those four days and to align with Nutria for President's Day, as we have in the past. I know that there was a question from a community member about Columbus Day and that is something that we also discussed. And we still, uh, continue to opt to have Columbus Day be a student attendance day. And also, again, as a reminder, student activities need to be happening on that day that discuss this and bring this as an area of focus for students. And we felt that that is something, the purpose of Columbus Day being like the history behind it and, you know, maybe even talking about Indigenous Peoples' Day and the changes in that and how that is a valuable lesson if students are in school. Um, the other thing about that too is that around that time, we've had Labor Day, we've had two Jewish holidays and then adding Columbus Day, uh, just, it's a lot of, um, interruption of schooling at the same time. And so.
And we also have during that month, um, uh, parent teacher conferences and then active parent teacher conferences, which are two half-days. We normally would have, uh, PD days, so students, it's very choppy for, for, um, for the students and curriculum.
But we did have that conversation.
Okay.
Questions, comments?
Can you, because this early dismissal date is something new that we didn't have before. What, what time of case going to be dismissed and how are we going to squeeze five hours of instructional time in that day?
So we are still working on that because we're looking at our busing situation, for instance, and we're making sure that we do have the five hours, we're not counting lunch. So we are working on what will be those exact times still. We're going to be working with, uh, the ABA on that so that we're all in agreement with the five hours of the student instruction. Um, early release days are not uncommon in other places. As a matter of fact, they happen on a weekly basis in many districts because they allow the opportunity for additional staff meeting time with teachers or more teacher training. Um, so we do have, um, templates to follow. So it's not something that's going to cause a lot of, I don't think, a lot of heading for us to figure out. And I could throw a timeout right now, I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement with it. Um, that's something superintendents are famous for sometimes. Putting something out there and everybody telling you, you're wrong about it.
But it, it sounds for Avoca West students which start at eight ninety-five, they won't be released before two o'clock.
So, an early release day doesn't necessarily mean a half-day. So I know that it will feel maybe, like, for some people, it might not feel like, oh, this doesn't feel like an early release day, but I want to make sure people don't confuse early release with half-day. A half-day is going to feel much earlier, but the early release day could just be an hour shorter.
Okay.
It doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be, you know, two or three hours.
Okay. Other comments?
Uh, regarding Columbus Day, and I don't know if this is the cra, is it, has there been in discussion about reframing it as Indigenous Peoples' Day?
So, I feel like we use the term interchangeably here at Avoca. What you're seeing here is the terminology from ISBE. And so that's what we put in there.
Thank you.
The idea of having a calendar committee, sounds like a good, good idea. Uh, have you considered an Avoca, is it a good idea or not, to also guide them or to into that committee?
We haven't talked about what it would be like for next year, but we, you know, we will take this to our fair, our PTC and gather feedback there too. Yeah, and also, actually, thank you for saying that.
Okay. I kind of, I'm, I'm a parent here as well. I have an eighth grader and a fifth grader at Avoca West. So I did do quite a bit of, uh, double, where two paths, you know? And I will have next year, actually Emily reminded me, I'll have a Nutria freshman and a student here at Murray Murphy. So, I, it did make a big difference when we were picking days too. So it was, um, we, we did try to think of that.
Would, would there be any conflict between giving a third?
Uh, well, I was pushing for Abraham Lincoln's birthday. It was a Friday and then Emily looked at me and she goes, okay, well, you'll have one student home on Friday and one on Monday. I'm like, no, let's, uh, switch this up. It's not a good idea. So, um, it was, it was interesting, yeah.
But I think that example and your explanation, you can never get it perfectly, right? It's always a balancing act because we have different people with different priorities, family situations, cultural backgrounds. Um, but I like that you're trying to make a, uh, process that's more inclusive so people at least have the opportunity to be heard. Um, I think that ultimately builds more buy-in.
Yeah, and I do, I just want to say again, like, I remember specifically Andrea and Emily had ideas that I hadn't thought of. And we went through those, I'm like, these are really good ideas, like, I, you know, let's, let's make this work. And so that's important also to note. It's like, the more people you get in the room with different perspectives, like, there are different ways to look at it. Um, you know, a person can sit down and just follow the same template. And, and to, I want to say again, to a greater extent, it should look similar. But we're working with very specific, uh, parameters and we have to follow those. But I think it's always just a good, um, opportunity to look at it with fresh eyes when somebody else is sitting there with you. And I'm telling you, they, they kept me sane, especially that day that I, this whole room. So Andrea actually did, no, I think we're fine.
Any final questions or comments from you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank him.
Next up, uh, item ten point three, but I intend to issue a request for qualifications for architectural services.
Um, so we have this tonight for the board for discussion. This is a conversation that has been ongoing this fall with the finance committee. And it is something that has come up, um, also briefly here at the board as well. We took what came up here at the board level and then dove into this more at the finance committee meetings. Um, where we ended, and I'll let the finance committee members, uh, speak to this, was the recommendation to issue a request for qual, uh, qualifications for architectural services, um, giving the current, the conversations, the conversations that have been happening around H-BAC and some of the committee of the whole, and also recently with the health, life, safety surveys. So just wanting to see, since this is a topic that is, we really want to dive into and look at again and it, it hasn't gone away actually, since, uh, the strategic plan, since referendum. Um, it was a good time, we thought, to maybe look for what is the current interest out there? What is the breadth of expertise? And so there is a proposed timeline here, uh, for moving this forward if there is consensus from the board.
Uh, I'll add a little bit here. If, you know, back in August, we were talking about the air conditioning. We've had estimates made about the cost for it. Um, and some clear reaction that, that it's quite expensive, more than we can afford right now. But can we get a second opinion? Can we get a fresh look at the facilities to really understand what the costs are? And so the, the thinking was, okay, let's go out, talk to new architects, get a, a different perspective on what our facility needs are, uh, which hopefully will lead to cost, uh, estimates and we can understand what's possible. I know, I don't know if the finance committee want to add to that, but I think getting a fresh look is what's needed. I also think, to be candid, I think it's important, um, for the community to know that we are kind of doing our diligence and our own. Anything else?
Um, I'll just add, I know coming out of the referendum that there was, um, concerns. I, I, I didn't have them, but, um, having worked closely with our architects, but, you know, people were, um, just wanting a fresh look at the problem, um, going on in some of the buildings. So we just think this could be a great step for our district, uh, to move forward and see what we can, we can do for the issues with the facilities.
Anything?
I'd have to add just a question. Uh, the interview with the short listed firms that was, will be with the finance committee, if other board members are interested, can they join or is close to the finance committee?
Board members are always welcome at the finance committee. Right, you guys love this. Right?
You should check it out.
Uh, any questions, comments, anyone?
I, I think it's a good step, so.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so there's board consensus to move forward with? Okay.
Yes.
So then, um, we will issue the request for qualifications on Monday, December fifteenth, um, and then have a submission deadline of January ninth, so after we come back from break. And our goal is to, um, schedule those interviews the week of January twelfth with the finance committee members and then present a recommendation to the board at the committee of Avoca on January twenty-ninth. If there is a need to update this timeline, I will obviously let the board know just to know that, you know, we present timelines, but then some things happen or there are some, um, some things, conflicts that may come our way. So just know that we, I would update you and let you know if something changes. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to item eleven. We're back to public comments. Does anyone have a public comment before we wrap? No. That's good.
Great job. Very good meeting, a lot of great things that you guys have been doing, a lot of great reports. So I'll thank everyone that was involved. I still think that the thirteenth should be a holiday, it's my birthday.
I'll work on it.
And it's my thirteenth this year coming up, so. Uh, but no, thank you for everything you guys have been doing, so. Very concise. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, because I added an item to a closed session, I get to read. The closed session statement, so get comfortable. I'm not going to rush it. All right, I move to convene and close session for the purpose of.
Check it.
Twelve point one, security procedures, school building safety and security and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, a threatened or reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property. And the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational or educational setting or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational or educational setting, or volunteer of a public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public imposed in held record as with this act. I think that's it. Cara, break your second?
Second.
Ms. Alprey?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Rora?
Yes.
Ms. Tereseal?
Yes.
Dr. Farah?
Yes.
Dr. Lauren?
Hi.
Ms. Rivera here?
Yes.
All right, we'll have a break and move into closed.